Let's go. Hey! Firefighters! I got you, right? Hopefully not more than kidding. Welcome to our annual council organizational meeting. I call this meeting to order. At this time, the invocation will be given by Rabbi Seth Phillips. Rabbi, please come up. And after the invocation, we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Rabbi.
Thank you. To this place of power and potential, come priests and pastors, rabbis and reverends. We come with the many voices, the many faiths of the people of Allentown. We come not for unanimity, but to celebrate the diversity, the stamp of the Creator that each of us bears on our faces, and the encouraging message that behold how good and how pleasant it is when brothers and sisters do learn to live together in unity. Let us pray. As we turn to our individual sources of strength and honor, of life and love, let the spirit of gratitude unite us. Gratitude that the democratic process worked again in this year. Gratitude that these citizens are willing to leave the anonymity and the comfort of home and heart to be the lightning rods or the tributes of the people in our city. Gratitude that the heart on the great seal of the city of Allentown is no mere static device, but enables and nobles eats warmly as a living thing, inspiring and encouraging our leaders to take care of the least of these. Gratitude that we may learn from the party of Lincoln and Eisenhower that a house divided against itself cannot stand. Gratitude that we may learn from the party of Roosevelt and Kennedy to ask what we can do for our city. So let us be strengthened and ask your blessing on these our leaders that they find the strength and the courage for the way ahead. May the words of Rabbi Tarfun from 1900 years ago ever ring true. You will not finish the work, but neither are you free to desist from it. If not now, when? Bless us one, bless us all, that we may go forward to that great day which you have called each of us here to participate in. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi, for that great message. At this time, Mr. Allen, please note that all city council members are present, with the exception of Mr. McLean, who was excused for this evening. Also, we're joined by our city controller, Mr. Glazier, and our solicitor, Ms. Brubord. At this time, outgoing members of council will say a few remarks, one of many remarks. We'll show Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. First of all, I want to draw attention to and express appreciation for the members of the Fourth Estate, those people who write our newspapers, our televisions, our radios, those who cover our events, and those who make news real and are disgusted with any news that is false. We thank them for covering our events. Second, as regards the city per se, as I'll say in a few minutes, particularly I want to express my appreciation to the city solicitor's office, which is Mr. Hanlon over here and Ms. Whitehead. She's here, yeah?
Here.
Okay. We're talking, and my two minutes of comments are about the institution of the inside of the city and how it works and who works for the city. Who works for the city is making it work. Clerk's office is an institutional type of position, which means over the weeks and decades of service, knowledge and facts and experience of the rising tide, the falling tide, the rising tide every two years, back and forth, their residual source of help to those of us who've been appointed or elected to office and put into practice. They guide us through the labyrinth, if that's the word, of our laws and regulations. So special thanks to them and to incoming members of the city council. I commend the city council's office as one of the best resources and honest resources you will have. When I finish, I'm going to make a request of some people seated here that will be there. To start off, I ask you, what time is it? Stop looking. Look at your watch. Look at your handheld device. Look again at a bigger clock. A big clock. A grandfather clock. How about Big Ben? Everyone knows about that clock in London. Except for people like me, who grew up in Pittsburgh, where Big Ben is a who and not a what. Going back to the idea of a clock, almost everyone over a certain age has seen the insides of a clock or a large watch. For those of a lesser age, all they get to see is a little battery. The bell's built. But what about the rest of us? When we look into clocks, we understand what's behind them, even if we don't see them anymore. It's like, what's inside your body after you've seen the sort of doctor's view of thing and get sewn up? You don't need to keep seeing the inside, you just see the outside. But for the rest of us who live in the institution called the city government, we get to see a wonderland of moving parts: gears, cogs, spurs, complexity, blades of metal moving back and forth. And all, all that activity going on, back and forth, click, curve, intertwined, is for the purpose of rotating a round metal shaft of metal that goes to the outside of the clock. That is to see the face of the clock. That shaft moves all the other pieces of metal against a background of numbers: one, two, three, up to twelve. Our Big Ben is City Hall. The time and voice are those numbers which may be accurate or a little slower, fast, or just plain wrong. That's the chief executive who tells that time. That's the outside voice, face of the city. One person in an office. The job of the legislative branch is to ensure that the time is accurate and truthful. That's seven people visiting this room we're seated in at least twice a month. But inside Big Ben, inside the city hall, are hundreds of city staff and workers. They, capital "they", are the gears and cogs and moving pieces constantly at work, working for the needs and betterment of our citizens. Without their work, those outside arms of Big Ben would be erratic and static. Now, I served on the council for the past two years, and I was the chairperson of Community and Economic Development Department. I also was a council member for the Public Works Department and the Human Relations Department. Given that structure, that each council person is being involved in three departments, all council members come to learn broadly of the needs and issues of all the city departments. One of the most important tools that council uses for its work is the monthly vacancy report. We learned, I learned, month by month that there are a significant number of positions that go unfilled. Even though there is a need for work and even though council has approved funding for each position, it became clear to me over the past four years that the executive branch was losing its effective grasp of the needs of those cogs and spurs of the inner workings of our city. And that consequently, those two arms of the face of the city clock were not telling the true time, the true condition of Big Ben, our city. From my short experience on council, I will note two small, but real and symbolic accomplishments of the council. As we head into 2018, the formerly crippled Community and Economic Development Department is gaining momentum and focus. Council has again funded much-needed positions. And council carried out its obligation to ensure that competent and experienced leadership is in place. Let me repeat that again. Council carried out its obligation to ensure that competent and experienced leadership is in place. And several times this year, in the past year, council has stood up for challenges to that responsibility. Again in 2018, looking forward to 2018, council has funded $150,000 for community activities and cultural institutions. Looking back, council realized that we were spending a lot of money on activities, but there was little coherence in those activities by different entities within the community. And at the same time, it realized that it wasn't spending a single dollar for the cultural institutions of our city. The city art museum, for example. So council has mandated the formation of a broad committee focused on the effective use of these funds. That is to say, when we have dispensed those funds, it will be to a specific reason that fits into a plan. And early action by our committee, that committee, will bring results as early as March. With energy and focus from the legislative branch, that key component of the inner workings of our Big Ben of government are valued and committed, city staff and workers, Big Ben will have new levels of achievement for our community. And with that, I would like to ask all of you to give a round of applause to all our city workers here tonight who will stand up. Please stand up. Thank you very much. I appreciate it and enjoyed my service here.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. Great words of wisdom. It's my turn. Good evening, Mayor Polowski, council colleagues, friends, Allentonians. This is a very difficult, tough night for me personally. I am leaving something I immensely love, serving the people of Allentown as a city council person. I have dedicated my entire adult life serving the people of Allentown. Although not a native Allentonian, my entire adult life has been committed to Allentown and its people. First serving proudly for 38 years with the Allentown School Board, Allentown School District, as a teacher, system principal, principal and central staff administrator. The last service to Allentown was my eight years in city council, the last three as president of council. I was honored and privileged to be president of city council. My love, commitment, and dedication to Allentown will not end tonight. I will do all my power to continue to make Allentown a better community for the families and the children of this beloved city. As I have said many times, the children are our future, by far, the children are our future. I would like to summarize my years as a council person in the following way, with the holiday great play, The Christmas Story: Council Past, Council Present, and Council Future. I had the honor to serve with the following: Jeanette Eichelone, whom many called the Iron Lady, a tough ombre, but a fair person, quite admired. Joe Davis, a quiet man on the East Side, deeply committed to serving Allentown. Frank Concannon, how can anyone ever forget Frank Concannon? I think Frank ran in a... He ran in the election, didn't make a phone call, didn't knock on the door, didn't put up the sign, and he won pretty hands down. And he had the privilege of serving one meeting. I've known Frank for probably 40 years, and God rest his soul, Frank's a good person. Michael Donovan, a man ahead of his time, a true liberal, okay? Who always looked out for the little guy, always looked out for the underdog. Mike Deamore, a powerful figure. When I first got on council, Michael was the president. I was sitting over there. I didn't say a word for six months. Michael, man. Man, he... Michael. Michael, a very, very excellent city council member and president, and who's serving now as a district magistrate and doing a fine job. Jeff Glazier, who I call him the financial intellect, was on council with me. Allentown School Board for 12 years, many as president, city council, now the city control. Mike Schlossberg, the Energizer buddy. The batteries never die. The batteries never die. Never stops going. When your phone rings on your birthday, and you go, "Oh, my God, it's Schlossberg." He's wishing you a happy birthday. Mike, they don't come any better. And he's married to a fine Irish girl, by the way. Pete Swire, a very caring man, homebred, very proud of being in Allentonia his entire life. Served in city council, loves Allentown and all it stands for. I knew early on, when I was sitting here and Mike and Pete were off to bigger and better things, maybe not better, they went to Harrisburg. That might not have affected them. But when I first met them, I knew they were only renting seats up here. They were not going to purchase them. They were only renting them. But they both are outstanding state representatives, serving the constituents on a daily basis and doing a fine job. And I'm proud to call them to Mike and Pete, my friends. Council President. Council President. Candida Atha. I didn't know a whole lot about Candida when she first arrived on council, but I found her to be an excellent council person who has a firm grasp on what is happening in Allentown and all the issues that need to be addressed to make Allentown a better place. Your wit and caring for Allentown is contagious. Roger McLean, who's not with us tonight, a police officer who started as a patrolman and rose through the ranks to become the chief of police in Allentown. Knows the city like the back of his hand and also has a firm grasp of the issues facing our city and has been an excellent colleague. Cynthia Moda, a very caring, quiet lady. Very caring, quiet lady. But she knows exactly what's going on and has an impact on council and important issues and has done an outstanding job as chairing the Parks and Rec Department and seeing the Cedar Beach Pool come to fruition. Darrell Hendricks, also a former police officer who ended his career as a captain with the Allentown Police Department. Totally dedicated and committed to serve the people, serving the people in Allentown. Many times, his bark is bigger and tougher than his height. I could attest to that. But his love of the city is unwavering. He's a true friend and a loyal person to me. Julio Garidi, the longest-serving member on council, senior statesman, starting his fifth term this evening. Fifth term, unbelievable. What can be said about Julio that has not already been said? However, one thing I learned is that Julio served with Lou Hirschman, which I never knew. I never knew. I never knew Lou Hirschman and Julio served on city council together. Oh, no, Lou reminds us of that. I mean, council meeting, right? Julio is a seasoned veteran on council, is caring, self-spoken, committed and dedicated and loyal to all his constituents. Dave McGuire, Dr. Day, served a two-year term as council and appointed member of council. A professor, you can tell a professor by nature when he gets into all the complications of Big Ben, that hand, that whole bit, the mantle and all. Dr. McGuire, a professor by nature, New York College for many, many years. He was our go-to person for any comments or questions about the DEP and the EPA issues we went today. I learned more about blending than I ever want to know about blending. He's the ultimate gentleman who cares deeply about the environment in this city. You will truly be missed. They don't come any better than Dr. Day. Council future. With Candida, Roger, Cynthia, Darrell, Julio continuing to serve on council as council members, they are joined by the newest members of council, Ed Zuchel and Courtney Robinson. Ed Zuchel served many decades in Allentown Police Department, retiring as a sergeant. He cares deeply about the city and will be a positive force in moving city council along to make Allentown a better community to raise a family. Like his campaign slogan was, "Make Allentown Great Again." Did you steal that from someone? Courtney Robinson will bring enthusiasm and lots of energy to council. He has been mentored... He's been around the political field for many years. He has been mentored by the best: Jen Mann, Pete Swire, Mike Schlossberg, and Mike Deamore. Courtney, now it's your turn on council to use the nurturing and the experience to make the city thrive and better for all its residents. I now go on to the people that really make city council function on a day-to-day basis, and Dave talked about it. Tawana Whitehead, who's sitting in the back. She's our deputy clerk to council. She's a true professional. She is very quiet, but extremely effective and efficient in what she does on a daily basis. She is most respectful, courteous, and cooperative to everyone she meets. Tawana is a class act and a terrific individual. She is truly an asset to the city council office. Thank you, Tawana. Michael Hanlon, our chief clerk to council. If there was ever to be named an MVP of city council, it probably would not be any of us. The MVP award would definitely go to Mike Hanlon. Mike is a loyal, dedicated city employee. I believe 29 years, Michael? Around there?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years? Mike has served numerous city council people and can write a book on each one of us. I have spoken to Michael probably hundreds and thousands of times over my last three years as city council president. Mike is the utmost professional. I will miss a lot about city council, and Mike and I will truly miss our interactions on a daily basis. You are the best, by far. I move on to the hundreds and hundreds of city employees who come to work every day to make Allentown a better place for all. Our employees come to work daily with the commitment and dedication to their job. I truly salute you and commend you for a job well done. You are the true heroes of Allentown, the city employees, whether you're a director or a maintenance worker outside. You are the true heroes of this city. I would truly be remiss if I did not thank my family. Everyone who serves the public in a political role sacrifices a lot for their family. Serving Allentown for 46 years, you definitely need a loving, caring, supportive family. I have the most supportive, caring, loving wife for the last 42 years. She has supported me and has always been there for me, our two children and our two grandchildren. She really does not like to play the life. In fact, she's not here tonight. She's watching the two grandchildren. She's the best wife, mother,[1472.24] She's the best wife, mother, grandmother anyone can have. I love her with all my heart and soul. She's been my soulmate for 44 years. I would also want to thank all my friends and my supporters of my political campaigns over the years. My last teammate up at C.C. Earlup, Dave McGuire, Darrell Hendricks, Sue Rudd, Gary Hirsch, and Brian Kleiner. They have energized me and made me a better person by knowing them. I love Allentown with all my heart and soul. I wish nothing but the best for Allentown as it moves forward. Allentown was once known as the All-American City, and it will again be known as the All-American City. God bless all of you, and God bless Allentown. I love you all. Mr. Garidi, you've now become the acting president. You're the senior member, and there are no officers elected yet, you are now the acting president, I turn it over to you, Mr. Garidi.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. And welcome, everybody. Good evening. Stay there. I think what we're going to do now is we're going to, some of us would like to say a couple of words, so, about the two council members who are returning to the people house today, and, and leaving council so we can work on the new council members. So, I would like to ask, I think, Mr., our vice president, Mr. Darrell Hendricks, to start, start us off with the remarks for the, the council members who are leaving.
Thank you, Mr. Garidi. I had the great pleasure to work with Ray and David over the last few years. I would like to thank Ray for his longtime service to the community, both in the school district and city council. Ray took his role seriously, gathering information to make good decisions in the better interest of the community. His affable personality helped council make it through some serious decision-making and difficult times. I like to consider Ray not only a good colleague, but a good friend. I wish him, Mary Beth, and his family well. I would also like to thank David for his service. He stepped in forward when most of us would be taking a step backwards. His stewardship on the Community and Economic Development Committee in anything environmental was a welcome presence on this body. I wish David and his wife well. As both of you know, your wisdom and advice doesn't need to end this evening. There are plenty of open spaces in the back of the room at our council meetings. Your presence would be welcome, and as council emeritus, perhaps we will give you four minutes under courtesy of the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else I would like to, at least, uh, probably?
Dr. McGuire, to have a councilman that is a doc, has a doctorate in chemistry was a bonus not all cities are lucky enough to have. You taught me so much about the environment, how to preserve our parks and our streams, and like our president said, blending and blending and blending. And also, your knowledge of the arts and architecture was amazing. I'll always remember the afternoon we spent at the post office and the evening we had at the movies. You will be missed at council, but I hope you'll be around and available for advice. Thank you, Dr. McGuire, for your service for our city. Mr. O'Connell, from the moment I sat up here, you made me feel comfortable. It was comfortable as you can feel for the first time, first time you sit up here. Through the next weeks and months, you helped build up my confidence. You encouraged me, listened to me, and always let me know when you thought I did a good job. I will always be grateful for that. No matter how hard times got from time to time, decisions we had to make, debates we had, you managed to help us get through it. You helped it, and you helped us by keeping it light at times, and other times reminded us we have a job to do and decisions we had to be, that had to be made. Your favorite saying, "We, we can agree to disagree, but we will always respect each other's decisions," is what made my last two years easier. The Irish in you and that fun-loving personality is something I will always remember. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell.
I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Volta, please say a couple of words.
Mr. O'Connell, it has been a great pleasure serving with you. I want to say publicly, I, I just want to thank you so much for, for voting for me when I was appointed. You were the one who stuck seven times.
Eight ballots.
Yeah, actually, yes, straight. And you said, no, one Cynthia on city council. Thank you so much for your support, and when I think of you, I think of a man of distinction. You will be missed. A very wise man. Thank you for serving. I'm gonna miss your perfume, you know, and, and his wife, she makes perfect perfumes. And a man, a very wise man. And I think I learned a lot about the environment. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Volta. Mr. Glazier, would you like to say a couple?
I hadn't thought of it, but thank you for giving me the opportunity. A good council is made up of people where everybody brings something to the party, as it were. And Ray, you certainly brought a lot to the party, and Dr. McGuire, you stepped in on short notice to fill the balance of my term, and as we've heard this evening from everyone else, you brought a lot to the party as well. And I think that this has been, because of that, has been a very, very good council. And gentlemen, I certainly wish you well in whatever endeavors you choose to pursue in the future. Thank you.
I'd be advised that Mr. McClain is on the phone. Can he, can you hear us?
I can certainly hear you.
Oh, great. Would you like to say a couple of words, sir? Welcome.
I, I absolutely, I absolutely would, and then I'll say some more a little bit later. But I want to thank Ray for his leadership. I want to thank Dave for his, for his insight in so many subjects. I'm really sorry to see both of them leave because they were both older than me. Now that moves me up on the age table. So, I'm number two behind Candita, but I don't want to give away to Ray. I certainly would rather have Ray and Dave mad at me than Candita. But anyhow, I do want to thank, I, I, Dave, but Dave, I want to, I want to thank you, you gave me flashbacks to high school chemistry classes. But your insight was, was amazing, it was always good, and it always got to the point eventually. Ray, your leadership, even though we didn't, we didn't agree on everything, we, we talked it through, and your leadership was something that I admire. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to wish you both the best.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McClain. One thing that we all, those will see, you know, that every word that he's saying has a double meaning, okay? When he says something. All right. So, I'd say that I'd like to say a couple of words of you, not for a couple of seconds, but, and I'd like to say, Dr. McGuire, who's here, sitting here next to me, it's all, it's been a pleasure and an honor having you here in council. You bring a lot of wealth and information from your education and also from your life, data, common sense, life, and issues that you learn, and kept us all aware of what, what is, what's going on with chemistry, what's going on with the water, we gotta deal with our narrow issues here, especially as we went through a, a stormwater management issue, and you were a breath of fresh air and this. And you also took a challenge in the Community and Economic Development Department. As a chair, I was, you co-chair with him, and you took into it, learned it, and provided a lot of good insights so we can have a better, see a better department, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much, I wish you the best. Have you ever wanted to hop the R with your computer once in a while? That's an inside joke as well. And to Ray, gosh, the man who supported me as personal counsel. And, you know, we've gone through a lot in this city, when you, you have really, you stepped up in a time when we had just gone through the water and sewer deal, which took a lot of our efforts, it was a lot of work. And you were, you were in council at a time when you got sick for a while, and, and really came back, turned around, turned your life around, and became stronger than before, I think. And we, I truly appreciate you, the way you run the meetings, actually, sometimes I thought I should have said that when I was president. But it was, I, I think you, you, your presence and your experience as a manager from the school district, and also working in council, brought a, a different, different way of running the meetings. I think you have a lot of respect from the audience, and was able to run good meetings and, and help us move the agenda forward. And you were always listening to each one of us in the dice, and took into account everything we asked you, and to let the public know that the personal counsel has the power of writing the agenda. If he doesn't, he doesn't put it in, he doesn't get in unless we have other council members that actually can put it in. If we have, I think it's two council members, we can put any issue in the, in the agenda. But he always was fair, caring, and learned the issues before we came to council to deliberate in front of the public. So, I wish you the best. I think you'll be around, sure, and I, I. I'm sure that you and Mary Beth will take some time and relax, and I wish you, you both and grandchildren, not too many GM JVs and, and too many scotch. But I know you're gonna have a good time. So we, we welcome you back whenever you want to be here, and.
Back in the corner over there.
We're the 4H over there.
I'll be over here. I, I think, one thing I, I do want to say is, I've been in city council eight years, two meetings a month. It's 24 a year, 24 times eight, 192. Under 92 meetings, I missed four. Four, only four. 188 out of 192, that's not, I, I, I'd be in the Hall of Fame, huh, if I had two majors. But thank you, Mr. Garidi, appreciate it very much. Good day.